Okay, traffic signal replacement 26th Street and US-1. We've got that programmed in 2015, 16, and 16, 17. You'll notice some of those signals are starting to list a little bit.
I thought the county did a lot of that stuff. Is that a...
Just maintenance.
They just do the maintenance.
Just do the maintenance for us. They're our responsibility for construction. Now, we will do our best to twist DOT arms. Maybe we can be as lucky as we were at 17th and A-1A.
We're lucky.
I don't want to promise anything like that, but we'll start working that direction.
That was...
Yeah. And we just, as an aside, got an email. We're sending a letter to them. They didn't use all the $30,000 that we appropriated for the painting, so we're requesting the remainder of the funds back. I don't know if that's going to be $5 or $500, but we're asking for it. Stormwater project, 12th Avenue interconnect. This is in the area just south of the main relief canal and east of US-1. We'll be tying one system into another that will route through an existing baffle box that's already there. So, we'll make that connection and direct the discharge to the river or through the main canal through that.
That's it?
That's out for us. Next to Rob's.
Okay, so, well, we're on to solid waste then? Is that correct?
Ask a question, please.
Yes.
When we're looking at other projects such as, yeah, some of these recreation, construction projects, does, will Public Works provide any project management oversight on those?
They, if they need us to do, we've helped them with their tennis court resurfacing or any painting or any construction. Yes, we do that for them.
That's what I thought you...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And actually, I'm fairly certain that some of the members of your staff actually helped Rob put these estimates together too for some of the buildings.
Scott Dawson worked with Rob for his, the facility work.
Thank you.
We're on page 167.
Any specific questions about solid waste? One thing I will point out, we have a small revenue source that we've, we identified that we haven't in the past. We have a service that we, for our commercial customers, if they have a site that's so constrained that their dumpster can't be accessed by the truck, we roll that dumpster, physically roll it out, lift it, and roll it back into the enclosure. There's a charge on the books of $2 for that service that hasn't been billed in the past. When we were doing an audit of our billing, we found those. It's going to amount to about $10,000 in additional revenue, and we're sending letters out to those customers advising them of that, and that will start in October.
Under your goals and challenges, you've got improving the cleanliness of dumpster closure areas, improve convenience of dumpster used to multifamily residents. How are we doing this? What kind of program?
We, when we do the collection, we try to make sure when we're there that there's not, you know, it's not untidy around it. If it is, we notify the owner, give them the opportunity to clean it up, and if they don't clean it up, we clean it up and build in for that.
Okay, this is something we're doing formally with, you know, department guidelines or instructions or how are we, how are you implementing this?
Just really on a, on a case-by-case basis. If the driver sees something, they let Lonnie know, and Lonnie makes personal contact with the, with the owner.
Okay.
Any further questions on waste management? Guess there are none.
Right. Excuse me.
Just so you know, on solid waste, we do have some personal contacts. For example, we met with some of the owners up on 13th, not only talking about the two-waying of the street, but we also talked about the alleyway, some vision where one of these days that'll become a pedestrian way. How do we get the garbage cans? For example, the restaurant there had 46...
They, they have about 10 extra cans a week, and we collect from them four times a week, so 32 and 40, about 40, yeah, you're right, 42 cans a week.
42 cans a week, and those are sort of labor-intensive in the fact that they're, it's like a residential pickup is what it is. So, we think we've identified a way of getting a dumpster in there, and it will serve like three of the businesses, and then we will allocate the cost according to the use of that dumpster. And then, there's an enclosure already in place if we can just sort of put the gate in there, the proper size, and that'll probably take one of those rollout type of things that we will do. But we've identified, if it's appropriately charged per use, we could reduce some of the costs to the, to the businesses in that area.
And it will really make that area look better. Right now, everybody has individual cans, and we think, and we think we've got a program that we can put two dumpsters in and serve the whole alley and not have those cans out there. And one of the things having the dumpsters, the service is more reliable. The service can happen five days a week for commercial service, and as opposed to the cans, it's really a residential truck that serves them. Those only work Monday through Friday, so Saturday's not on the table. So, if you have a big event or a restaurant sometimes needs that Saturday service, we can get there to better accommodate their needs.
And that alleyway has a lot of pedestrian traffic. People utilize that when they're walking downtown.
We also have people avoiding the 13th Street going down that alley at about 30 miles an hour. So, hopefully by making it two-way, we will get some of our traffic off of that alley as well.
Yeah.
Cindy, on page 171, you have a bad debt. It's an increase of $10,000. What is that all about?
Bad debt is one of those things that is actually a year-end adjustment based on the change in the amount of our accounts that are over 120 days, like year-to-year change, as well as what we've actually written off. And over the years, we either didn't budget for it or we budgeted a lower amount. So, I've started doing a little analysis of, of our projection for next year. You know, we're still in the place, we hold onto accounts for seven years before we write them completely off, and because we actually have a lot of people that leave town...
Why?
And then they come back. And you'd be amazed how, how often we actually find people who come back to town to open a new account, and we're able to say, "Well, that's excellent," as soon as you pay us the one that you, you know, abandoned five or six years ago. So, and then even after we write them off, we send them to collections. So, we never, you know, completely give up. But we did have in all of our utilities a period of time right around the hurricanes where we had lots and lots of accounts that now, seven years out, have been written off. So, I'm just trying to be a little more realistic. It's a year-end adjustment, and, and it is what it is, but, you know, and sometimes it improves, but I'm just trying to make sure I get a little closer to the, to the reality.
Flora?
Yeah, I had a question about landfill and what we're utilizing, what the project, yeah, the future looks like for our landfill.
We, we are just a, a contract hauler to the landfill, but we are in contact with the county and work with them to do things to extend the life. One of the things they've done recently is they've taken the majority of the yard debris stream out of the landfill, and it's now going to the Ineos plant where they are using it for the ethanol production. But we, we work with them. Any of the policies and procedures they put in place, we follow those, but, but we're a contract hauler. We've paid the landfill fees, and we rely on the county's solid waste statistic to manage, manage that.
Okay. And then again, I guess just like to see in goals, objectives, looking for efficiency and cost savings and trying to come up with other measures that we can do to...
Page 197, in the capital plan, I have no questions about it. It's just that it's, you have a plan to replace trucks.
We do have a truck replacement schedule that we're trying to do the same thing in solid waste that we've, are doing in the others, is try to get our fleet to a newer age. We are trying to get our big trucks on an eight-year replacement cycle. We've got a plan in place that will let us do that, and we're moving forward with that. Those, those are some of our heaviest maintenance users in our, in our garage.
And I guess a year ago, when we did an adjustment to the rates, we're now able to fund this without doing any borrowing, and I think that's important for everybody.
Yeah, we've not done any borrowings, Cindy, in ages. Yeah.
You know, and again, the, the larger vehicles are on an actual cash purchase, and the light vehicles and trucks are on the same five-year lease purchase that we're planning for the rest of the light vehicle fleet, so...
I tell you what, a 1999 Mack was a good truck.
Yeah.
Yep. Still running it. Any questions about this? I mean, I have none. You have none? Okay. Okay, I guess we have... Anything more for Lonnie?
Cemetery.
Cemetery.
Cemetery. Oh, yes. How could I forget the cemetery?
Put it at the very end of the book, that's how.
So, that brings us to page 185 in the budget book. Questions, please?
Once again, re-reviewing the rates so we can start developing a reserve. Yeah, the idea was to have this cemetery funded by a trust, and I think we have to be able to start building up the reserve to look at, you know, sustainability for the cemetery.
Thanks, Cemetery.
Cemetery are strange critters. I don't think you're going to ever accomplish sustainability for, I mean, they're, they're a unique endeavor.
But we used to have a trust fund, right, that would, yeah, that we could rely on. We've depleted that through the years with capital projects, and I think we need, you need to have, you know, a reserve fund.
Well, where are you going to get it? How are you going to get it? I mean...
That's it. We need a plan to start establishing a reserve fund.
Your idea? Let me hear some...
Obviously, I need to start looking at, yeah, the rates that we're charging.
You don't want, you don't want to transfer from the general fund to it?
I think we've subsidized this sufficiently. I think we need, it, we need to look at, yeah, the rates.
I think we looked at the rates, and we've made improvements, and we're looking forward, and I also think that this is something that has kind of been asked and answered by the public, that they understand that this is not exactly perfect when it comes through a budget process, but they're okay with that. I think kind of my seat at this table reflects that.
You know...
It's not an enterprise fund. That's why they call it a trust fund. That's why it's never going to support itself just by default.
You know, I, I think Flora and Jay and Greg have had the pleasure of signing all the cemetery deeds, which is one of the little-known jobs of the mayor. Another one is getting summons on lawsuits that breaks. But in any case, one thing that I observe in that is that the columbarium is the weak link at this thing. In other words, we sell very, very few columbarium spots, and that goes back to marketing, and that's a very difficult problem. And you see that in the, in the budget here. I mean, you know, we projected 36,000, and the next year's budget is 18. 18 may be ambitious, really.
It's about what we're on track for this year. That's where it's at.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is the columbarium certainly has not worked out all that well.
It's not been, it's not been as productive as we thought. People are, I guess the demographics are changing, and, and cremations, you don't have an immediate need to have to do something with, with your loved ones' remains. You can, you can enter them in the ground, you can put them in a columbarium, you can keep them yourself...
Put them on the shelf.
And spread them somewhere, so...
Take them out in your Pathfinder.
So, it's, it's one of those things, we, we've looked at the rates, and we've talked to, to you folks about it. Our rates are competitive with, with Sebastian's. Tammy and I struggle with this. Tammy's group graciously does the sales, and we've tried to think of ways that we can, can make those sales easier, and we've come up with something, I've been promising Tammy this, and I just want to pass these around, that we can make available to the funeral directors and, Jay, if you'll hand one of those to Tammy, she hadn't seen these yet, that gives just the information about our cemetery. I mean, it's, it's hard to, to try to say what, what will and what won't increase the sales at your cemetery. You know, you can't really market those like you do a lot of products that we have, but when somebody walks in the door, I think this will help Tammy be able to show them, because if somebody's not familiar with it, this gives them an overview of what we have to offer, what the prices are, and at least they can take something with them when they leave, and our contact information's on it, they can call us back, and then we'll get these also to the funeral homes in town as well.
Oh, and you said we're competitive with Sebastian. I mean, our cemetery is far superior to, I mean, Sebastian. There is no question that, I mean, the quali, yeah, the care and...
There's, there's no question, and we've...
I think, you know, we could afford a premium price, and that's what I'm saying. Yeah, let's look at putting some small premium on it, start building up a reserve or, yeah, storm, anything else so that we have it, or irrigation, yeah, replacement in the future, those kinds of things you're going to have, so...
Do you think that we need to consider having a cemetery committee that is on top of this and working on publicizing to, I know I hear it over there, but what I'm saying is we have a PR problem. We don't have budget for PR and marketing. Would the committee enable us to do that? I mean, listen, I'm on city council, and I didn't know until I was involved in the city, the different options we had from buying trees and benches and these things to...
Right.
You know, commemorate loved ones in the city. I don't think people know, and we need to find a way to, to reach out to the public.
I share, I think Craig's opinion of that. It's not worth a candle, and actually, I proved it to myself because six or nine months ago, I tried to recruit people to start such a group, and I was, I didn't even get one, and even to include some of the people that I know that are most interested in, you know, I wasn't successful, so I mean, it...
And yet, this we think is such a valuable asset. That does make, yeah, there's a disconnect here in this one.
It's a valuable asset to me, and I'm on the same page I think Craig is. It's a strange beast, and we have it.
And we welcome, we welcome any ideas and...
Well, you know, thank you for doing this.
I like this. Going to the funeral homes, this is a good idea.
Yeah.
And for Tammy's office to have something to hand out to people.
And also, you know, Lonnie and you guys, I mean, you and your staff, your job is probably not quite like the city managers or our job where we get complaints, but, you know, you, you do a great job, and you handle complaints, and you take care of things, and, you know, I mean, stuff is going to break, and stuff's not going to get taken care of and all the rest of it, but I think, I think your unit does a wonderful job, and that's just a personal opinion, but I value you guys highly.
Well, thank you, and I'll, I'll pass that along, and you've heard me say that we judge our success when the phone doesn't ring, so we'll do, we'll continue to do our best and, and keep, try to keep the cost down, and, and hopefully we'll find some ways to, to get this cemetery to improve that financial position and go from there.
Well, one of the issues that we have, and it's conflicting, is trying to keep costs down, but at the same time maintain that personal relationship with our residents, and so we've got to do those little things, again, going back and meeting up on 13th, and we thought we were talking about a road, next thing we're talking about an alley, and then we're talking about where the garbage containers go. And so, we try to stay flexible where we can address all those issues and, and try to be that one-on-one with the residents that we can...
I think we all realize that we are a high-maintenance community, so...
It's nice to have backup at those meetings too, so...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lonnie?
Okay, Eric, we'll soften up for you.
Just as a question, I mean, are we going to do water and sewer today, or are we moving that one around?
Water and sewer.
It's on the agenda.
I, I think what we should probably do as a proposal is, is do the airport and then come back after lunch for water and sewer, which is going to take some time.
She doesn't get the new...
This was the one that was sitting here, and then I've got another one back here.
This is the one I got for a day, which has everyone.
Should have been one...
There was one in your place sitting, yeah.
Yeah, that was...
Was the red, did everybody get the red ones?
Well, she didn't put them in red.
You need another one?
You know, Jim...
It's revised at the top.
I can project water and sewer. Airport's not going to take very long, I don't think. I hope not.
Yeah, me too. I'm hungry.
Eric, we've always got all the answers.
I only have three questions, but, and I'm sure others have questions too, I, but I was wondering whether we should do the marina recreation before the water and sewer, because they're, they're not going to take very long. Water sewer, as far as I'm concerned, is take, going to take an hour and a half or two hours, really.
Whatever. We got the people here.
That, that may be a good idea, because Recreation Commission meets this afternoon.
Four o'clock, yeah. Yeah, so we can do that. We can rearrange. We'll get Recreation this...
And Marina, you have down too.
I'll get ahold of Rob.
Oh, I don't, I don't care, it's just a suggestion. Okay. Airport.
Thanks for sandwiching me in here between cemetery and sewer. Appreciate that.
You're feeling it, huh?
Worked out well. Works out well.
Well?
Well, to me, the airport, as you said, should be relatively easy. Eric is doing an outstanding job. We talked about the grant situation. He's doing very well balancing between the Florida Department of Transportation and FAA and trying to make those two work, and one of the issues that we have at the airport is a lot of times funding will come down, and we need to at least have a project that has been reviewed by the city council in order to get those funds in and do it. We're also stepping up our pace on the leasing of our commercial activities, and I think we're becoming a little more flexible. It's, he's got some issues with that, but he's getting there.
I'm working on it. It's that military background. There's not much flexibility, is there?
Yeah, if it's not black and white, but he's, and, and one of the things that we're trying to do is to make sure that we're getting quality, quality tenants into our, our facilities. The latest one being the brewery.
Yeah, it's exciting.
I mean, that's going to be really a destination point.
Perfect for aviators.
And it's something that it's really going to bring in, and again, that, the, the way that that lease was drawn up and the way it's going to be implemented is not your typical lease where you draw it up and the guy pays you X amount of dollars per month and you move on down the road. This one had a front pay as well as a monthly lease because we broke it down from the building, because they're going to invest, what, $300,000 into that building? And then, so, we had the payment upfront on the building, and then there's a land lease that we have under it for the, the remaining part. Akalina, although they, their bank isn't under construction yet, again, a totally different animal in trying to put together the business model in which to facilitate that type of entity really at the beginning and the entrance to our airport. So, I, I think there's been a lot of that moving on and trying to bring together sort of business concepts into the operation, and Eric and his team has really done an extremely good job with, again, a reduction in, in the number of man-hours that are out there, maybe not man-hours, but mad people.
Personnel.
But I think Todd is his backup is, is really brought in, and, and the air shows, you know, are something relatively new to us, but I think it's bringing out the activities that are at the airport and, and just the Goodyear Blimp yesterday.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, that's a lot of good PR.
It was in the paper, too, yeah.
Yeah, and so, so I think we're bringing the airport out where the community understands they own an asset, and it is a very valuable asset, but I guess we're stand ready to answer any questions you have on the...
Well, on revenues, and this is really a question of Cindy, not one for you, but on many of these enterprise funds, we have a contribution from health insurance fund. And the airport is relatively small, $10,600. I just don't understand how that works, and it's something new this year.
It actually is something new this year. As you'll recall, two years ago, we went from self-insured health insurance to fully insured, and it took us a year or two, and, and when we were self-insured, we had a separate health insurance trust fund where we put in our suspected premiums and paid actual costs. When we moved away from that, we've given it a couple of years for the residual claims to wind out and any other, you know, monies we owed Blue Cross Blue Shield as we disentangled that, and what we're left with two years later is a residual balance in the health insurance trust fund that, that isn't needed for anything related to the old self-insured program. So, what I'm proposing is essentially a return of premium to every fund spread across five years so that in case, you know, we have something come up we didn't know, but more importantly, so that we don't create some giant revenue source in any individual fund in one year that then would go away the following year. So, I'm proposing to take that, it's about $2.6 million of residual balance, and give it back to all the funds across five years in the proportion to how many people they have in the health insurance program. So, think of it as a return of premium.
So, there's $2.6 million...
In total.
In total.
Mm-hmm. Broken up amongst the various funds depending on the percentage of, of total employees they have in the health insurance plan, and spread over five years so it isn't something... You know, you don't want to create a revenue source that's like 800,000 in one year and gone the next, so we spread it out smoothly.
And I'm not objecting to what you're saying, just a curious question. Are there any restrictions on what we can and can't do with the money and, under Florida law?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, that was our program. It was our funds.
Fight golf course or something.
And, well, you know, I mean, again, if you're trying to match the, the money back to, to what it was originally collected and put into that fund for, as it goes back into each fund, each fund is also paying the city's share of health insurance premium, so essentially it's kind of offsetting that.
So, what would happen is if, if you moved to, like, electric or water and sewer, it actually, to some infinitesimal amount, would reduce rates a little bit.
It, it isn't enough to make that big of a difference, and I would...
But I mean, that's where it ends up.
Right, and, and each fund is getting some. Electric is getting their proportionate share of it, as is water and sewer, but to, to give it all to a particular fund, I think you end up with a disconnect between what the money was originally put into the, that fund for and, and giving it back disproportionately.
How about the general fund?
The general fund is getting its share as well.
But it's not occurring, right?
How many dollars?
The general fund is getting 248 grand a year, spread out over five years. So, everyone's getting a piece back.
So, that $248,000 makes a material difference in '14 and '15.
It'll go away in five years, but by the same token, just in a single year, state revenue sharing tends to go at 50, 60, 70,000, so...
Yes, but I mean, you know, the, the starting cash balance is what, 170 or something, the surplus? I mean, that, I'm just looking at those numbers. It's kind of interesting. I, that's all. No comment.
Eric, on 149, you have a part-time salaries, an increase of 400 percent. What's, what's going on there from 1,000 to $5,000?
Yes, sir, that's, you know, I like to look at that sort of as a management tool is what it is. We, we've been, we've reduced our personnel by about 20% over the last two years, three years, so we're about eight people, now actually it's seven. We lost a employee, he was deceased recently, and so we're to shrink down to seven, but even moving up to eight, I think we're going to be tight, and, and rather than hire anybody at this point new and increasing that full-time, we thought I'd add a little bit of flexibility there. As you can see, I didn't use any in the previous, in the actual numbers and, you know, so it's sort of a, if you'll give me the flexibility, you know, Jim and I think that just having the ability to, if I needed to hire somebody...
It's an option.
It's an option, and rather than coming back for an emergency increase in the funds later...
Okay.
But you see, I, historically haven't used that account unless really needed.
Right, right.
Sometimes, you know, the temporary services and stuff like that, you can...
Okay.
Just feeling really with short staff right now, so I just wanted to be prepared.
Yeah, it just popped out at me.
A question utilities. Once again, you're a good user of electric, and up to $135,000 a year. Anything we can do to help with energy efficiency in that area?
Let me add on to the question. The budget lasts, or the budget in '13, '14 was 125, actual was 111. You're straight lining for 102 at this point, and I'm not debating the 136, I'm just saying you have a little bit of flexibility there, and the question, makes the question more relevant, I think.
That, that is, again, we're expecting a little bit of higher cost in that area, but it's hard to say, you know, it is...
We have a, a different opinion. We're hoping to give you a lower cost, but anyway.
Would, would be wonderful, in which case we won't spend the money. It's, it's kind of like gas and oil, too. It's, it's really hard to follow and to track to, to be as accurate as I'd like to be in that, but, you know, you're right, we only spent 111 in '13. We do expect it to be a little higher this year for the projected, and so I went ahead and said, "Well, let's just make sure we have a little bit extra in there in case we need it." Not sure where exactly that will go. The LED lighting that we're putting in is helping, and we're, we're looking at it in a future capital project.
That's what I wanted to hear, is those kind of projects, you know, things are That's what I wanted to hear, is those kind of projects, you know, things, or additional installation, or, you know?
More is coming. More is coming. We're looking to try to further reduce our need for electricity with LED lighting, and that has helped them. You know, if you're, it doesn't show here, but years ago, we were over 200,000 in the electrical cost. So we're down to 135, the way I look at it, looking at it from a longer perspective. But just the short, you know, couple of years that we're looking at here, it looks a little bit high.
Any other expenditure questions? You want to go on to the capital, then, or what do you want? Or you want, you want to go on to the goals?
I just have a couple theoretical ones.
Go ahead.
The timing of the master plan?
We should be done by probably March of 2015, maybe stretching into, you know, later spring, if we have to. That's heavily dependent on the public comment periods that we have to make sure we go through. And there's a lot of it with Airport Commission and City Council. But we hope to be done by that timeframe.
Speaking of the Airport Commission, I understood that they're putting together a financial plan for the airport also?
Yes, sir.
Have they finished that?
It's going to be called a strategic business plan. We, every airport master plan includes a financial plan, because we want to make sure we have a cost feasibility. Whenever we have that 20-year plan, we also take a look at the revenues and how it's projected out. But this time, we're also looking a little bit more strategic planning along with that. And the FAA has, you know, agreed with that as a good source of, a good need for the funding. So they've agreed to do that, and we're doing a little bit additional than the normal master plan on this. And we're starting, actually, this month with another public comment period on that, with our airport advisory panel meets this month.
So that'll be finalized when?
About the same time as the master plan. We might have an earlier draft as a section of the master plan, probably to you, and maybe in the fall. But it won't all be completed and finalized with your all input until the March timeframe.
And the chairman of the Airport Commission really deserves a lot of credit. Barbara is really pushing that.
Yeah, that's who I was, that's who I was talking with.
As a matter of fact, the consultant is meeting this Thursday with the FAA to make sure that we're on track with what they will continue to pay for, because we're stretching the envelope a little bit on a grant. But looks good so far.
But it should be something that would help us optimize all the development, the rental property areas surrounding the airport, so to continue for it to be self-sustaining. And I think it's important for the public to know, we have one of the few airports that are self-sustaining.
Right. And, you know, if you look at the summary page, which we skipped over real quick, but Cindy does a really great job, and I love that, because it's all on one page. You know, it's just a whole summary. We're looking at a 500,000-plus surplus projected for the next fiscal year. And it's actually getting a little bit better with our reduction in expenses, and our intent to try to bring in more flexible leasing terms, and a broker, a real estate broker and things like that, to try to increase our activity. That's why you see, I think, an increasing surplus there.
And hopefully, improved economy overall for all of us, that we would love to see.
The term surplus is misleading, it's really unencumbered balance, because it's-
Not available for us.
Surplus implies-
Surplus implies somebody can just come in, pay the money. Hilar, what else?
Just one other question. I know that Public Works will probably support the Airport Drive project, that, yeah, and you really appreciate all your work in getting the funding, you know, the grant funding for that area. Just curious, is to Public Works apply any other support to your FAA grants constructions, or is that something you're doing with your airport staff?
As far as the management of the project?
Yeah, just like project supervision, yeah, construction of the-
They will be managing that project. That's a road project, so sort of outside of our-
But I mean, your runways or taxiways, any other capital projects, Eric, that you have planned?
They do on smaller projects, if we need a little pavement repair and things like that, some drainage improvements inside the airfield property. When it comes to a grant project, though, it's a very cumbersome, cumbersome project, that includes what we would call force account work. FDOT, in the district that we're in right now, District 4, will not even allow us to use in-house work. They've just decided that there was too much issues with that, you know, some shady accounting, not in our town, but in other communities, that caused the FDOT, District 4, to just say, "We are not going to use in-kind services." So we do where we can, but usually not with grants.
Okay.
Want to move on to capital, around page 160 or so? You want to do individual ones?
I will, if you like. I think the best thing to start there is, page 155 has all of the projects that we're proposing for this coming fiscal year. And I can go over each one of those, if you like.
And actually, what we've been doing, if it works for you, Eric, is they're actually on the first column of your capital plan, on page 160 and 161. But then you can see the current year's slice in context of the whole five years and what you're doing. So I don't know if you have a copy of that book?
I've got the, I've got the big spreadsheet, because it's easier to see.
Exactly.
Blew it up on a big one. Yeah, we can, this is a great way of doing this. This is another thing I think Cindy brought in, and it really makes a lot more sense than the way we used to be doing it. It spreads out, and it shows what we're going to be spending per fiscal year. Daniella's worked really hard with Cindy's folks over at the Finance Department to prepare this spreadsheet. So I don't know, I guess I would just leave it open for questions. It shows all the revenue up first, and then where we're spending it below. And you can see that if you look at, I guess, the bottom line, which is the second, my second page, I'm not sure, it's just shown on your second page also. It shows that we're ending up with a net to the good every year. We've balanced it just right, so that we can do this many projects with the amount of funding that we have matching from the airport, to come out with a, come out in the black every year, and not go into the hole. Although, it probably wouldn't happen anyway, as we've said, because usually what happens is we just slow up the project, or some of it doesn't get done, like we're planning, or we even cut out a section of the project, because we can't afford it.